We call this meeting the Cartersville City Council to order. We will start with an invocation by Councilman Hodge, followed by the pledge by Councilman Step. If you'll please stand with me.
Let us pray. Thank you, Lord, for this day. Please continue to guide and direct us. In your precious name we pray. Amen.
Amen.
Tell me on the pledge.
(Inhales) I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic which is safe, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Ms. Killen, please call a roll.
My best pledge.
Kerry Hodge, Ward 1.
Here.
Jay Step, Ward 2.
Here.
Louis Tonson, Ward 3.
Here.
Lindsay McDaniel, Ward 4.
Here.
Diane Tate, Ward 5.
Lori Pruitt, Ward 6.
Here.
Thank you, Connie. I would like to note at the outset that Ms. Tate is out of town representing the city of Cartersville on the Georgia Municipal Association Board that she serves. Otherwise, she would be here in attendance. She wanted to make sure that that was known. She is at work for the city of Cartersville and not able to be here tonight. Our first agenda item is the approval of our council meeting minutes from our September 1st meeting. Council has had these meeting minutes well in advance of tonight. Chair will entertain any edits, additions, and if there are none, the chair will entertain a motion.
I reviewed it, Mr. Mayor, and I found no fault in the previous minutes.
Second.
Did you actually make a motion approved?
(Laughter).
I second it.
We have a motion and an emphatic second. Do we have... All in favor, please indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
And the minutes are approved. Our next item is a first of two public hearings. This is about a... It's case SU 11-02. Mr. Menino, if you'll start us off, please, sir.
Thank you, Mayor and Council. As you know, this is case number S 11-02. This is a request for a special use permit for 119 South Avenue. I believe it's also known as the Neal House. The application for the special use, the use proposed is for the place of assembly category. It is not a rezoning, even though it's listed under rezonings on the Agenda heading. Based on the application, the information was submitted to the city departments who have reviewed the application. The water department had listed a couple of notes if this application was approved, and they actually served or did food preparation at this location. They would require a backflow preventer and a grease trap to be installed in their plumbing. There were no other objections from many of the other departments. I believe the applicant specifically met with the fire department and Public Works. One of the difference between a special use permit as opposed to a zoning, there are different standards in review. Those standards come twofold. One, they're general standards for any special use permit that has to be considered by council. And then there are specific special use standards specific to each particular use that's listed in the ordinance. This particular use being place of assembly, like I said, has its own set of criteria. Reviewing it, it appears that the applicant would be able to comply with the criteria listed there. The other criteria, the general standards again, will be what is utilized in making decisions or final decisions on this particular application. Also included in your package were some letters of support and additionally petitions opposing the application. Since the time your package was prepared, there were a few other letters that came in. I believe they were distributed to you or placed on your desk earlier. With that and with the information provided, Planning Commission did hold a public hearing on this application and did recommend this for your approval by a vote of three to two.
Okay. Any questions for Mr. Menino at this point? Thank you, sir. I will open up a public hearing in just a moment. I do want to let everybody know, number one, we're happy to have you here and involved in your local government. Number two, the public hearings are typically limited to 20 minutes by ordinance. That can be extended, and I'm going to extend that courtesy if we're continuing to cover new ground. That 20 minutes is basically 10 minutes per each side. I'm going to ask everybody that is to step... When they step forward and speak, to say your name and your address so that our clerk can get that into the record. And that we want to make sure that we're plowing new ground, okay? It's going to be helpful if... It's not going to be helpful if everybody comes up and says the same thing. We want to make sure that we're bringing new items to the table and moving everything forward in this hearing. And like I said, after that time comes up, if we're still covering new ground, I want to make sure that everybody has an opportunity that wishes to.
Are there...
And that there... Once again, there are two meetings. There will be another public hearing on October 6th before a vote is held. I'm going to ask our... Could the attorney keep level... Our esteemed attorney to keep time, if you would please, sir.
Yeah.
And at this time, I will open up the public hearing for case SU 11-2. Anybody wishing to step forward and speak, either for or against, may do so at this time.
Good evening, Mayor, members of the council staff. Peter Olson for the applicant 15 South Public Square here in Cartersville. There's been... You know, we got a lot of opposition to this. I want to make sure folks understand what the request is. I think there's a lot of miss... Apprehension, misinformation about this use. I mean, my clients represent... Own this 1892 house at 119 South Avenue. Some of you have been there and visited. I think a lot of you are familiar with it. It's a historic home that they have spent time and effort, you know, improving and restoring and maintaining. They actually have a track record, but this is their seventh historic home that they've worked on. They told me they've had three at Acworth, two in Dillard, Georgia, one in McDonald, two of which they got on the National Register of Historic Places. So they have a long history of dedication and historic preservation. They've owned this house since 2005, and it occurred to them, since they sit on a 1.6 acre lot, that it would be a nice place to have weddings, receptions, and that kind of event. So under the law's ordinance, that requires a place of assembly special use. And the standards in your ordinance, they can easily meet all the standards. The house needs to be more than 2,500 square feet of heated space. It's about 4,100. They're not planning on making any construction changes to the house. They're not going to add any gathering space or any rooms, ala like the Stonewall Manor added a room. It's just going to be the existing house and then the outside sort of garden area that's right behind the house. All they need to do to comply with the fire code and stuff is reverse the doors, put some signs up, a few minor things. They're not going to add a commercial kitchen or do any cooking there. It would all be catered. They'd get an approved list of caterers, you know, because this is their home. They live there. They continue to live there. So basically, they're just going to allow folks to use their home to have nice quality events. Parking and other requirement, and another concern of the neighbors understandably, is the parking requirements. Your ordinance requires one space per three seats of maximum occupancy. The Fire Marshal said the maximum occupancy for the structure would be 100, and so that requires 33 parking spaces. They've got... That whole rear heater is fenced off, and there's a lot of vegetation, fenced off with a nice wooden privacy fence. And so there's ample room for 33 cars. There's room for more. Folks express concern that if more than 33 folks show up, where are they going to park? Are they going to block the street? I mean, you could probably park 80 or 100 cars back there. And so I don't see that they'll ever need to be any street parking for an event. There's not going to be a dumpster. You know, there's not going to be fraternity parties. I mean, again, it's their home. They're looking for quality... Quality, you know, the kind of wedding that's going to have a stringer attached or a tenor acapella perform. So this is, you know, this is a concept... I mean, they could use the income to help support and maintain this big house. It's a concept sort of called alternative stewardship or adaptive reuse. It's really something that the historic preservation community encourages, you know. Turn your historic home into a bed and breakfast, turn it into a reception hall like this. So that's the purpose. It's not going to be a bar. And, you know, there's... People seem to be apprehensive that this is an inappropriate use for the area or the neighborhood. One, I'd say it's allowed in your ordinance under a special use. Two, you know, it's right across the street from the MU. And all those houses, as you can see, everything on the east side of South Avenue is already known MU, which is a commercial district in your ordinance, which allows, if they have enough frontage, because some of those places, like they do, it would allow those things to become convenience stores, dry cleaners, offices, repair shops. I mean, that is a much more intensive zoning district than what we're talking about doing on this property. So we comply with all the standards that are in the ordinance. And we have the support, too. I wanted to point out of all the immediate neighbors. If you look at the west side of South Avenue, there's two houses to the north as you get up into Neal Street. Both those neighbors support them. There's two houses to the south, including Bobby Sue Johnson, who lives in that one.
Mr. Olson, not to interrupt you, but do we have a laser pointer that he could use to kind of identify... You're pointing to property markers, and I just want to make sure that everybody can see and understand.
Ms. Johnson, who lives right here, along the way, she supports it. The doctor who lives right here supports it. These two neighbors support it right here. These two neighbors support it. I think these two are vacant homes, they tell me. So the opposition starts with, I think, folks who live here and then folks who live out here in Barto and West Avenue and further away. So we thought that speaks a lot. And people who know the Hawkinsons know they would do a quality job. And I think the fear comes from people who don't know them. And as we said at the Planning Commission, I mean, we've been open and they've been open all along, we've been sitting down with folks and we've... with folks to hear what their concerns are. Nobody's contacted my office and nobody's contacted them. But, you know, we're still available to talk about what the specific concerns are, if there's something we can address with the application between now and October 6th. The use doesn't have any issue with the Historic Preservation Commission. We checked with Pete all day. Would anything need to be approved by them? He said no, because we're not doing anything to the house. Really, there's nothing that needs to be done. Maybe some revenue needs to be put out for a little bit of parking. We talked to Public Works about that. They said the less you do, the better as far as work concern. And so in the end, it's, you know, the goals are used similar to grand oaks, which have been here a long time, which is on a much smaller lot, which doesn't have parking that's screened. Everyone knows where the parking is. And which, when we ask... My clients ask folks at the city, do y'all get complaints about grand oaks? The initial answer was no. That doesn't generate any complaints. So we would see that that would be the same situation here. Once this use gets up and running, y'all won't hear another thing about it. With that, I'll reserve my time, any remaining time. And I did... Mr. Hawkinson and Ms. Hawkinson did want to say a few words to introduce themselves.
Rest in before you leave.
Yes, sir.
Could you put your pointer on 119?
That is... Their apartment is big, is this one right here.
In the black?
Yeah. So you can see, that's a lot that's as big as, you know, these six lots combined. It's 1.6 acres. All this is the open backyard. You know, there's a little garden area right here where they would have the weddings. The driveway is right along here, and, you know, the parking is fully screened back here. And I think there was some concern raised about lighting. I did want to mention that, too. I mean, Mr. Hawkinson is a landscape architect by profession. You know, he's going to do some quality professional sort of accent lighting around like you'd see at a nice facility. It's not going to have, you know, lights 30 feet high in the sky or anything like that. It's just going to have little lights on the pathway and things like that. So it's not going to create a light nuisance for anybody else. And the noise, you know, subject to the noise ordinance, I mean, they'll comply with every city regulation, of course. They'll comply with development regulations. They'll comply with anything that's out there. So we don't see it as creating a problem. I mean, if a party creates a nuisance, folks can call the police. But that's not the kind of party they want to have. You know, they're not looking to throw the doors wide open for any sort of mob event. Yeah, this shows the large area that's available that, you know, have parking totally screened. That's about 260 feet wide back there and about 150 feet deep, just that area of the yard. So, you know, it's going to be something people will show up, park in the back. You know, they'll show up over the course of half an hour at the beginning of the event. They'll leave over the course of half an hour at the end of the event. And, you know, while the event's going on, I don't think people would be able to know that there's something going on back there. So this is a shot, obviously, down the side of the driveway. I mean, the whole lot is... I mean, we left it the whole lot. It's about 500 feet deep, so it's quite a big... Any other questions, sir?
Thank you.
Okay. Any other questions for Mr. Olson at this point? Thank you.
Russell Hawkinson, 119 South Avenue. And I just want to make a few points concerning historic preservation. As Mr. Olson mentioned, we are very committed to historic preservation. And it was preservations that coined phrase, readaptive use back in the 60s. There's numerous examples, Roselong, grand oaks, lawyers offices, surveyors offices, even multifamily dwellings that have all been located within the historic districts here in Cartersville. The initial purpose was to create... Be creative in finding new uses for old houses and buildings and to stem the light that was sweeping through the historic grand oaks at that point in time and continues to also in some areas. It was also designed to prevent demolition by neglect or by demolition. Next to our house on the corner of Neal Street and South Avenue, where there's, I think, four houses now, there used to be a mirror image of our house. Some of the people who've been in town all their life may remember that. That was a prime example of demolition by neglect. It used to face, I think, Neal Street. It happened before we moved here, but people we've talked to around our house have said that it just disintegrated almost. So there's history of that. Readaptive use supported the idea initially that historic preservation was ever-changing, never stagnant. It has been quite effective. There's new montras out there right now, too. One is sustainability and the other is alternative stewardship, which Mr. Olson mentioned. In 2008, the magazine from the National Transplant Store Preservation had an article written by the Pew Charity Trust, and if they state, "Across the nation, caretakers are talking about transforming their houses into bed and breakfasts, or community centers, or wedding facilities." Proponents call such ideas alternative stewardship. We're not asking for bed and breakfasts. We're not asking for a community center. We're asking for the ability to practice responsible alternative stewardship within the existing guidelines of the current zone that we have."
Thank you for your comments.
Hi. I'm Audrey Hawkinson at 119 South Avenue, and I welcome the opportunity to speak to you. Mr. Olson and my husband have covered a lot of what I wanted to say, but I have a stab at it. I think some would have you believe that this is them against us and quite to the contrary, historic districts are a tool of preservation. And as is already been stated, we are definitely preservation-minded folks. And I'm not saying that we know more than they. I'm just simply stating that the case can't be made that we would somehow sully the district with what we're doing, because this is our home. We live there. There's not going to be any rowdy behavior. They're going to be approved vendors. They're going to... There's not going to be any keg parties or anything of that nature going on, because we will be on site at all times. To give you a little background, my husband and I were in other professions which have had a downturn in this slumping economy. And we were looking for something that we could do together that would have a positive impact. And that's why we have researched this and we've talked to other owners, gone to their facilities, and gotten a lot of great advice and ideas. But obviously, we are in a holding pattern without your approval. So we have done a lot of homework. We're chomping at the bit. We've actually had a little bit of interest already. And we just would like to... We already have the resource at our disposal. Kinda tailor-made, actually, for an event center. And we have the children's purpose, and I'm going to just let it go with that. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
(Inaudible).
Mr. Mayor, proponents have 45 seconds left.
Thank you. This is a public hearing. Anybody wishing to step forward and speak for or against, may do so at this time.
My name is Charles Cowan. I live at 201 West Avenue.
The pointer's right there in front of you. Anybody... Everybody feel free to make good use of that.
Oh, he's got something.
Right there. Right there. We're here again to protect our property. This is a beautiful place, and we love our neighborhood. He's a landscape architect. Where's the plan? I'm going to put... I'll put 33 houses, oh, here, there, over here. Where's the tent going if they're not going inside? Where are they going to go? Where are they going to use the bathroom? Just little simple things like a plan would help immensely. For both sides. I don't see a plan. I see a promise. I also know that once this is accepted or approved, they've already renovated seven houses. Well, what if they decide to rent another one and they leave? Whoever buys that house can do whatever they want to. They may not want to have chamber music. They may not necessarily want to have keg parties. They want to have a circus, as long as they don't have over 100 people. Well, they're not going to be inside. 100 people is for the structure. They're not going to be in... They're not going to be inside. They've already said they're the outside. So we might have 200 people. We don't have enough information. You don't have enough information. And so therefore, we stand here. We are opposed, because there is no information. There's a promise, but there's no information. And it's very hard for us to... In our neighborhood... My house is 110 years old. I know how expensive it is to live there. I know what it takes to live in one. It's very expensive and it's very difficult, especially in these economic times. But I don't want to have events. We don't even know what kind of events we're going to have. And we know what they say they're going to have, but we don't know what they're going to have. So, yes, we're very much opposed to this, because you can park anywhere. What if they park in the front yard? As long as they screen it, they can park in the front yard. So I'm opposed to it, because there is no plan. I don't see how you can make the decision without a plan. I don't see how the Planning Commission could have voted on it without a plan.
Mr. Cowan, I'll cut you off right there for just a second. You're welcome to make comments, but there's a set of objective standards that the Planning Commission is to follow, and they follow those standards and they pass it to us. Now, we have these public hearings. You're welcome to speak your mind, but I'm not going to let you criticize the way that the city of Cartersville goes about their business.
No, I'm saying, we don't know what's going to happen in that. We have no idea what's going to happen. No, no idea. We've been told what's going to happen, but we have no idea. Mr. Penley brought that up to everybody's attention when he asked about the lighting. But we don't know what kind of lighting's even going to be. So that's the point I'm trying to make.
Very good. Thank you.
(Inaudible). Anybody who speaks in opposition to him filled out a disclosure report. They'll stop by the desk right here. I'll hand them one. Karen and Lori filled them out.
Thank you, sir.
Anybody else?
Hi, I'm Maureen Kirkland. I just wanted to make a couple quick points. I know that I emailed all of you, so I don't want to reiterate. But first of all, historic preservation is great, but I think we're talking about two different issues. I think the house has already been historically preserved. But making, you know, turning it into a special events facility, I think, is a whole nother ballgame. My concerns are this. I own... I'm sorry, I didn't say my address. I live at Thor Neal Street. I also renovated duplex three years ago on 10 Neal Street. And I put quite a bit of money into it to make sure that I also tried to preserve it so that I could attract desirable tenants, which I've done. But the issues to me, when I bought these two properties, I had no idea that this was ever... That something like this could ever happen. It was really my understanding that this was a non-issue. I really wasn't even worried about it initially when I received the notice for the hearing. And the reasons for that are the history of past decisions made, including the Choate House, Bob Dylan's Photoshop, and the Jimmy... I think Jimmy Pike's real estate office. Those were three incidences that I heard about. So the history of the city council is to deny something like this. And I'm just curious as to why now it is... It's such a viable option. I'm concerned about possible event volume and parking, as we've mentioned. I'm also concerned about the variance of the permit going with the house instead of with the owner. That means that that permit or variance could be... Could be here forever, really, with no checkpoints in place. I do think that if this is passed, it is setting a future precedence for this type of thing to happen in any neighborhood in our city. So it really could affect any one of us. And the fact that my properties back up, both of them, to the backyard of the Hawkinsons is obviously a concern for me. It really hits me personally. I do think it's going to affect my property values, and I'm very much opposed. Thank you.
Thank you.
Hi, I'm Emily Lynch. I'm at 114 South Avenue, which is... I can't even see it. I think that's it, right there, right across from Neal Street. I don't... My property doesn't... I bought it, but I can see their house from most of the front of my house. Couple of things I want to talk about, the scope and intent that you have in your... I'm kind of nervous, and the zoning analysis. We're concerned about the safety. Cars will be going up and down that street. We just had our first grandchild. The Richardson's next door to me now have two grandchildren. There are families on the street who have small children, and there are retirees. My husband is semi-retired. There are other retirees on the street. So there is a hazard of traffic up and down that street. Also, there's... It could pose noise hazards. They say chamber music. I know what chamber music sounds like. It's... It can be loud. That's kind of a small backyard, and chamber music can be loud. And Mr. Hawkinson mentioned the lights. Yellow light. I'm sure they'll be beautiful, but their house is the tallest house on the street, and I imagine that the lights would be strong on the second floor, on the porch of the house. And those lights could possibly shine into the houses. See, all the way around his property, Maureen and I walked around it. There are single-family houses all the way around the property. We observed one fence at the back of their property. Off-street parking, 1.6 acres. He says that the cars will park in the backyard. I'm sure they will. But I'm sure there are people who don't... Who won't want to park in that backyard. They'll want to park on the street. And the street, Mr. Richardson measured the street, and it's 24 feet wide, and two cars park on either side of the street, and it's... And that has happened. It would be very difficult for emergency vehicles to go up and down. I think impossible, actually. So there's that issue. The protective screening, I mentioned that. They have... I think they have. I think they have one screen, one fence at the back of the house. There are some trees, too. That's true. The hours of operation, they say they'll stop at 11 o'clock. Well, that's fine, but I've been to a lot of weddings, and I've given a wedding, and I know what happens at weddings. And weddings are a lot of fun. And we're not concerned about people drinking, but that late, people might want to stay after 11 o'clock. And then there's traffic going up and down the street again late at night. I mentioned the outdoor lighting. The ingress and the egress, there's one driveway. They have one driveway. And it's right next door... The house next door to the Hawkinsons, he did... He is in favor of... The neighbor is in favor of them, but he's got little bitty kids. And I see them on the... They're up and down the sidewalk all weekend. I think those are all the points I wanted to make. It does not... It is not compatible for their surrounding, I don't think. And a special events facility is compatible with a lot of single-family houses. That's all there is on our end of South Avenue. Thanks.
Thank you.
(Inaudible) 30 seconds.
Oh, no, it's two minutes and 20 seconds left.
Bob Dylan, 1046 Sugar Valley Road. I don't actually live in this neighborhood anymore. I did at one point, both on West Avenue and South Avenue. Years ago, I think it was '97, October 23rd, 3rd of '97, we had a similar thing happen in our neighborhood. At this point, we established a boundary of the historic district. And quite honestly, the only thing that's supposed to be allowed within this area is R7, R10, and PS designations. I don't know really the difference between the rezoning and the special use permits. That's a little bit over my head. R7, 7,000 square foot lot. R10, 10,000 square foot lot. PS, from what I understand, is professional services, small doctor, dentist, small law office. No mention of anything to do with catering, receptions, anything like that. How many people here are in the opposite of this that you see them up? A lot of people. This is kind of a tight-knit neighborhood. You know, everybody likes this neighborhood. They want to stay there. They want to stay the way it is. Maureen mentioned the Choate House, which I believe was core of Neal and Barto, which basically started that whole fiasco 13, 14 years ago. We beat that. Then there was, as she said, Jimmy Pike, the other end of South Avenue, and myself at the opposite end of South Avenue, 129.
the opposite Enniskillah Avenue, 129. Um, I, you know, it's just one of those things. I, I personally thought that this had been taken care of, that there would be no more issues about what could or not come into this neighborhood, as far as a commercial entity. It's, it's basically black and white. There's not a lot to be there. So, why this came up is beyond me. Um, that's pretty much all I have to say. So, uh, I hope everything works out okay.
Mayor, I got a question.
Yes.
From Mr. Olson. When they mentioned your name earlier, and then obviously you came up to, you're, you're speaking against it.
Right.
What were your thoughts originally, when you were trying to put in? What was, what were you putting in?
Uh, actually, what I wanted to do was build a garage apartment behind my house at 129 South Avenue, which actually is adjacent, or connects to the back portion to their property. Um, I wasn't allowed to. And I wanted to have a small photo shop. I'm certainly tired. So, my photo business is not like Tonsmore, where there's a lot of people coming in and out. It's basically maybe a personal weekend night. And it was gonna be apartment above, studio below, garage department, set on the back lot. I had an acre, it would've been perfect, but didn't happen, so.
And you were asking for a zoning change? For a special use permit?
Uh, you know, quite honestly, I don't remember how it was described. I remember I had the sign, so I'm assuming there was a zoning change or variance, or it might've actually been this. But, you know, I really don't remember what's been the logic here. Thank you all, appreciate it.
Uh, Mayor, that is all the time for, um, opponents, although the council does have the power to extend that, if there are other speakers.
Okay. Uh, I will extend that for both sides. Mr. Olson, you look like you're ready to?
I mean, I just wanted to say briefly, I understand people's uncertainty, because it's not here yet. We don't know, you know, who's gonna wanna try and rent it shortly. I mean, thi, this is the mildest possible change there could be, in my mind, because they don't, they're not changing anything about the house. They're basically, they're wanting to do what they could do for themselves, which is have a party, have somebody's wedding. They're just wanting to charge for it. That's the only difference. So, all the kinds of events that they have there, are the kinds of events that anyone can have at their home. It happened all around them, all the time. They tell me people have parties, people frog up the street with parking. Of course, that's not gonna happen here, because they have biggest lot in the neighborhood times three. So, you know, th, they're gonna simply have nice events in their home, and they're gonna charge people for them, rather than just have them for their family and friends. It's not, there's no plan to be had, with all due respect to, uh, to Mr. Cowan's. They're not building anything. I mean, they're gonna, you know, they're gonna have cars parking in the grass. There's not a parking lot getting built. Um, I don't know if people might wanna put up a tent, but I mean, there's not engineering plans required to put up a tent. So, we're simply saying, they wanna use the existing structure, and just be able to charge people to come have nice events. We'd, we'd say it's really the, it's the mildest possible change you can have in this neighborhood. And it's stressed, again, especially that last speaker, he should take a look at BMU District, if he thinks the historic district, that's shaded on there, um, can't do anything commercial. That's a commercial district. The entire other side of the street would not need any permission to do any of those things shown in the zone, or in its use. So, that was a choice the city made at some point. So, they certainly consider this to be a commercial area. We're across the street, so we're not in that district, but, you know, that could happen to any of those houses at any time, without, without any further action from the council as a regional urgency. And there's already commercial, you know, up the street, there's offices and things like that, so, you know, y'all, in your wisdom, put a place assembly that's allowable with a special use in a residential district. This is a perfect home for it, because it's a big home, and it's an old home, and it's got a huge lot where it can, it can have these events without affecting anyone else. So, it, it makes great sense to approve this. If not this house, I can't see what house would make sense for us to, for a place, you know, to have this. So, thank you.
Thank you. You can?
Sorry?
Yes, yes, sir, you may have, okay.
Okay. He just reminded me of something, the MU issue. I think a lot of the people are afraid, okay, you guys changed the zoning on this house, this one, the guy down the street. Granted, the house across the street are MU. Um, they've been, there's apartments, they've been everywhere. Most of them are single-family homes. The house right across the street just sold to a couple out of Kennesaw, I think. Single-family dwellings, so it can be a rental. Um, the, the big issue is, okay, it happens once, then it's gonna happen again, again, and again. And then we're gonna have a historic district, basically, that doesn't exist as a residential area. So, that's, I think, a big deal. So, thank you.
Thank you.
Patty Richardson, 110 South Avenue. Um, I'm all for small businesses. Uh, my husband and I own two. We also know that times are hard, and I think they would do a great job at whatever they did. My concerns is, is safety. 100% of safety. I do have two grandsons. We walk the streets, the sidewalks, all afternoon on, on the weekends, and it's just not gonna be safe. I, I am curious if they're gonna have weddings outside? Can I ask that question?
Uh, you, you can ask that question to council, and then council may ask the applicant, um, an answer for that.
I've also given three weddings for three hours. We've had them at a horse farm, we've had them at a, at a, a home larger than theirs, with a smaller wedding. We have parking well-marked. It is natural tendency for people to park where they know they can get in and get out quickly. We had attendance, we had signs, we had lights, we had everything. They park in the street. I've lived there for 25 years. Most of us have lived there that long. I plan to live there till I die, I pray. I love the neighborhood. I don't wanna get emotional about it, because that's not good, but it's just real important to me to hold its integrity. A lot of towns have lost there. Their historic districts are trying to rebuild these, these homes in downtowns, so we can sit on our porches like we all do. And that's the kind of neighborhood we're down. We sit on our porches, we talk to each other. We love where we live.
Thank you. Uh, Ms. Hawkinson, you said you wanted another comment. And I know we're going over the time, but once again, it's, uh, my intent, as long as we're blowing new ground and giving people an opportunity to speak, and a reminder that we'll have the same amount of time allotted at our October 6th meeting. Please, go ahead.
I cut my speech short, because, uh, Mr. Olson has covered a lot of ground, I was gonna cover, but when I see these, um, other folks from our area stand up and tell you their thoughts and feelings in opposition of it, I just wanted to put it in, in plain terms, in context, for all of you, in that there's 33 counties on South Avenue, 33, and there are three addresses on the petition that opposes. There are 14 properties that abut our property. Two people are on the petition. So, that speaks to the people around us, and their feeling, their confidence in our ability to do what we say we're gonna do. And, and we have shown ourselves to be good neighbors and good stewards, and we need some of that. Thank you.
Okay. Uh, if you would, please, address the, the question about the nature of the weddings. Uh, are these primarily gonna be indoors or outdoors?
Both.
Both.
Uh, there's inclement weather, there's people that prefer a small intimate wedding in the house, and some that prefer to walk down to a garden on a path and get married. So, just, you know, we have a little sunken garden with a picket fence, and some of you have been out, and I appreciate that very much, because I wanted you all to put your own eyes on it, so you get the feel of the place. But I would say both.
Okay.
Can I, can I ask one question?
Please do.
Um, in regards to the parking issue, that seems to be something that we're gonna be babbling for the next month, so to speak. Let's say you're having a decent-sized wedding, and let's say it is an outdoor wedding, and let's say we're expecting 100 people, and they're expecting a full-blown tent in the backyard. At that point, where, what would be, where would you send those cars? If there was a tent in the backyard, that was usually?
Okay. You've been there. You know where the sunken garden area is, that's surrounded by the picket fence?
Mm-hmm.
There is a parallel alleyway on the corner beside the Magnolias, right down through there, that would accommodate a large tent. The parking is back behind there. The whole width of, see the, see the L shape, the jut out there?
Mm-hmm.
All of that area back there is parking and, and so.
Okay, so you're saying?
It's coming up the driveway, going around the perimeter, to the back area of the garden. Our house sits to the front of the property. The bulk of our property is to the rear of the house. So, we have, if you're looking out the back door, we have a sunken garden area here, with plantings and a picket fence, and a fountain. Here we have, like, an alleyway up here is the driveway that goes around the perimeter to the back. And people will have to come from the back.
So, you're saying that main green area will be the parking, sort of where the shaded trees would be where you're gonna put the tent?
And this one?
This, I've got, I've got one right here. The way I understand it is, the parking will primarily be back in this area.
Yes.
And that the weddings will be in this area?
A little more to the, uh, to the left.
Right here?
Yeah.
Weddings are gonna be?
Further down.
Down, yeah. Right there.
All right. And that?
Along that line.
All right. All right.
It's still too high.
And I'm sitting right in here in this little circle of trees here. So, why don't you get the pointer and show everybody?
No more pointers for you, Mayor. Do a little pointer.
Here's the sunken garden, right here, along this line, right here. Here's the house, here's the garden. Here's, here's an open space right here for a tent. Here's the driveway. Follow that around and park back in this area. There's a picket fence that I would say is probably about right here, and we'll extend that across, so it will delineate all the parking areas.
So, your plans are, that whole back area is gonna be the parking permanent?
Yes. There's probably nine plus parking spaces.
It may be hard for you all to get the context, um, but looking at, like, the plaque, which is in your package, it should be, you know, this is 150-foot distance, this is 350 feet deep, and this is 240 feet. So, this is a big lot. But y'all can look at some of these city properties and see.
Oh, yeah.
You know, how much bigger this lot is than, like, you got your maintenance and your public works and stuff over here. I mean, a lot of cars can fit back here. Here's a parking lot right here, with a whole bunch of cars moving out. So, there is more than enough. This, it's 60 feet from this side of the house to the proper lines, 40 feet from this side of the house to the proper lines. So, there's, you know, I mean, you wouldn't have a tent if it'd be 100 by 200 feet covering this back area.
Yeah.
A 20 by 40 tent would tuck you here, just fine.
Okay. All right, thank you.
My name is Charles Bucket, and I live 306 West Avenue, and I've lived there since 19, October 1963. And we worked hard to get this thing in the old town, and historical district. Then we had a home up on, uh, Barto Street there on the corner, that people wanted to put a, a, um, law office and everything else. And, you know, this one here, if they was to sell it, whatever they are anticipating would go with it. That's not right, because we have fought for this district, and I think it should've stayed the historical district, because every time we want to do something, we gotta go to the city to get permission to do this and that. So, I think it's time that the city stood up to us, kept, kept the word on it. If they're gonna be in an old town, the historical district, let's keep it that way.
Thank you for your comments.
I'm still Maureen Kirkland. I have one more thing that I wanted to add. I wanted to talk numbers, just for a quick minute. Um, I have been a special events professional for many years. I was most recently a director of sales for Marriott, and now I own a meeting planning company. I just wanted to say that if I were hired to market that facility, my job would be to fill that facility up on Saturdays and Sundays, namely, for two, I would, I would probably try to get two or three events in there. And then I'd hit luncheons on the weekdays, and if I could, I, if I could get evening events on the weekdays, I'd do that as well. I'd do whatever I could to get people in that facility spending money. Now, if you, if, with 33 parking spots or more in the grass, um, if, if 100 people attend an event, that could be a possibility, 67 more cars. If there are three events on a Saturday or Sunday, I know it sounds like an exaggeration, but there could be over 400 cars going up and down South Avenue, which is a very narrow street. I don't even know if emergency vehicles could get up and down. I don't know, I don't, I doubt that that would happen, but if you got a good salesperson in there, that's what I would do. And I don't think that South Avenue is equipped to handle that. I really don't. Um, and again, the variance going with the house, I, I really don't understand the logic in that at all. I really don't, because there's no point to revisit, there's no point to measure, there's, there's no, there's no probation on it. It's just wide open for, forever, it sounds like. So, thank you.
Thank you. Are we, are we about even?
Mm-hmm.
Okay.
Hi. My name is Lynn Pritchett. I live at 217 South Barto Street, and I know all of you have sat in these seats for as long as I've been on Barto Street, I believe. Um, and I think you all go, oh my God, here comes the Old Town Neighborhood people again. And it's right, we are the Old Town Neighborhood people. You can look out here and see some of the same faces you've seen ever since the Choate House issue came up, but tonight, you've heard from some new faces and new voices. Um, these are people that have purchased homes in the Old Town Neighborhood. I like where I live, and I like it when somebody asks me, where do you live? And I say, Old Town Neighborhood, and they go, wow, that's a great place to live. I heard the neighbors are nice, wish I could live there, it's convenient to downtown. When I walk my dog through Old Town Neighborhood, or I drive through showing somebody the rest of the neighborhood, my heart fills with pride. If you look at, um, on South Avenue and what Floyd Braid has done to his house, and Steve Taylor, and the improvements he's made, and you come up West Avenue and see what, um, the hits had done, and I don't know how much money David Hulke has put in the house that he bought, that he owned West Avenue. And you go down to the other end of West Avenue, and you've got Bob Smith and Courtney Hultman, and, uh, Greg Frisbee just recently bought Miss Sidney Jolly's house and has renovated it, and has some nice renters in there. There are at least four other rental properties that have changed hands since that happened. The new owners have cleaned up, repaired, and painted, and the houses no longer have the appearance of housing owned by a slumlord. There's still a few, but they're getting cleaned up. The neighborhood, the face of the neighborhood has changed over the last 10 years, and it's all in growth in a positive direction. Even the rental, people that are renting houses now, you've got a better class of people, I guess, I mean, I hate to say that, but you do have a better class of rental people moving in that are planting flowers and hanging up plants and making the yard, keeping the yard nice. Tonight, I think you've heard that, um, the voices of, of Old Town Neighborhood asking you not to issue this special use permit. Mr. Olson stated that the Hawkinsons wanted this special use permit to help with the cost of renovating and making the preservation of their house a little better and a little easier on them. All of us standing out here, those of you who own a house in the neighborhood? We put our hearts and our own money without having to open a business to better our neighborhood. Thank you.
Thank you for your comments. All right, at this point, can you, I'm going to give you sixty seconds, then we're going to move on.
There's Bob.
I'm Bob Smith, uh, four oh six West Avenue. I oppose it. Let me tell you why. You play, play dominoes. That's what's happening here. You start playing dominoes. You issue one, you're gonna have to issue another. I'd love to have a tea room in my house. Ain't gonna happen, not in a historical district. You gotta, gotta push it back. It can't happen. Okay? Thank you.
Thank you. All right, we'll go with one more.
Thirty-seven more seconds.
I'm John Morrow. I live at two fourteen West Avenue, been there sixteen years. I've got a siege mentality about it. Seems like every two years, we're up here trying to defend an historic area. The last few decisions I have not been in agreement with. Give you an example next door to me. Fellow especially lower the fences. You can read a newspaper in my backyard any night of the week. Now, the fences haven't been lowered, so I even wonder about enforcement of whatever you decide to do. I bought the house next door to me because it was in doubt as to what was going to happen. So, I come from Charleston, South Carolina, and I guarantee you, the zoning there is strict. So, when I look at what I see going on, this, uh, constant chipping away every year, frankly, I'm tired of beating path up here to defend what I thought was settled many years ago. That's all I have to say.
Thank you.
Can I ask Randi to do something?
Uh, you certainly can. Mr. Manino, please.
Um, Randy, it may, uh, I'm curious about one thing. The, the multi-use zoning that's in effect in Old Town, when, when did that zoning change? I do believe that...
The multi-use zoning district was introduced in nineteen ninety-six in the city of Quartersville. So apparently, it was adopted as part of the ninety-six zoning ordinance and map amendment.
And when we did that multi-use zoning area, did we also put in writing a special use permit as is now, or has that been rewritten since ninety-six?
That has been rewritten since ninety-six. That was an amendment, special use permit for, um, place of assembly was added probably two thousand five, two thousand and six. Diane Mitchum, who actually applied to do a text amendment to the ordinance, then in turn, applied for a special use permit for a place of assembly for a home she lived in on Doug Street. So I think that was probably two thousand and six when the special use category was added.
And then in the last readoption of the zoning ordinance, y'all modified the special use permit to go before the mayor and council instead of to be decided on by the board of zoning appeals.
That is correct. Before special uses were called special exceptions, and they went to board of zoning appeals, as Mr. Loveland said. It's one hearing, vote, and it was over with. The change to the special use permit after the planning commission and two readings before city council.
So you're, so primarily what you're telling me is before now, had someone that was zoned MU come up through planning commission and requested to have a special use permit?
Oh, no. MU, you could do a special event in MU without its use permit. That's an allowed use in MU zoning category.
This, this property is currently zoned R seven. It's an issue. MU's what's across the street.
On the east side of South Avenue.
Yeah, so in general, you would've, you wouldn't even have to go to planning commission. That's what I'm trying to...
That is correct. No, it's an allowed use.
And, and before this, before the change in the ordinance, if it was, if it were R seven, you would've simply, it would've gone to the board of zoning appeals, and they would've made a decision. It never would've come before council. We made that change so that in events like this, you would need to go through the planning commission and then come to us for two public hearings. Does that answer your question?
Yeah. Although it's not going to help us much right now, but in my opinion, we need to look at that special use permit ordinance, the way it's written. Maybe it's, it's not specific enough, maybe we need to look at how it's worded in order to alleviate some of the confusion that continues to go on. That's just my opinion.
Any other questions for Mr. Manino?
No.
Okay, thank you. I'm going to close the public hearing. A reminder, we'll meet again on, on October sixth. We'll have another public hearing, same amount of time will be allotted, and, and as I said, as long as we're plowing new ground, um, you know, we're willing to listen to as, as long as, as long as we need to, to get, give everybody a chance to have their voices heard, so. That's it. And out of courtesy for everybody who came tonight, uh, I'm going to take about sixty seconds or so. If you want to hang out, you're welcome to stay with us. If not, uh... We won't be offended. Randy, I hope you'll get through this item a lot quicker than you got through the last one.
I'll, I'll see if we can get through this a little bit quicker. As you had mentioned, this is the Urban Redevelopment Plan. Back in twenty-ten, um, council adopted Urban Redevelopment Plan for several areas of the city, and as, as required, there has to be an entity that has designated the redevelopment authority in that. It was chosen to be, yourselves chose to be the entity to control this. With that, any ordinance that requires a quarterly update due to what's going on in the Urban Redevelopment Plan areas, and with that, we'll cover two, two different items. The residential portion or the North Town area over the last few months. One is, you're aware, Mr. Quist, has worked, um, pretty effortlessly and pretty thoroughly on championing some, uh, two different CDVG grants. Uh, one was supplemental disaster recovery funding, in which now is Third House is under construction with a combination of Habitat and Edwah Housing Authority. Two of those are in the North Town or the redevelopment area. Additionally, uh, through another CDVG grant, uh, the city has received two hundred thousand dollars for home improvement projects for owner occupied senior family residences in the North Town area. So that covers the residential area to the items that have been occurring. In the Urban Redevelopment Plan areas that were adopted were industrial, uh, there have been opportunity zones approved, and since the original opportunity zones have been approved, we have added on to one. We just found out a few days ago that that expansion has been approved. We were just notified by DCA. We expanded it to include some Tilly property in the northwest industrial area. Additionally, we've had several folks apply for the state job tax credits that are offered as a, being part of an opportunity zone. I believe in your memo, it states, uh, at least five, Amerco, ATR, Aquaphill, Southern Yard, and Thermo Tax have all applied for. I believe they have received the state job tax credit that is offered, again, like I said, being part of the opportunity zone appropriate. With that, as our quarterly report, and we'll do it again next quarter.
Thank you. Any questions for Mr. Manino on this item? Okay. We, we don't need a...
We don't?
Thank you for the update. Our next item is a, Mr. Alda, you've got the next two items.
Thank you, Mayor. Unfortunately, one of our first-time home buyers is facing foreclosure, and she's, uh, seeking a quick sale to Wells Fargo Bank in order to avoid foreclosure. And Wells Fargo is offering twenty-five hundred dollars as part of our original down payment assistance in order to have the quick, quick sale and not avoid the foreclosure. So, uh, I'm requesting that you approve the, the twenty-five hundred dollars for the quick sale so she won't be facing foreclosure.
Mayor, basically, they're probably outstanding still around four thousand dollars, but if it does go through foreclosure, we have second priority, so we would receive nothing in this current market. So it is recommended that the twenty-five hundred is better.
And the, the fifteen hundred dollars that's, that's shorted, is just shorted to us, or do we have to pay fifteen hundred back to DCA?
We don't have to, we don't have to pay it to anybody. You know, the, the original grant was funded by DCA and various other agencies, but since then, we've been able to rebuild it and refill it on pretty much an annual basis. Isn't that right, Pete? So there is no payment out to anybody for that lost money.
So our choice right now is to accept twenty-five hundred dollars or accept nothing?
That's basically it.
Okay.
That's right.
All right. I don't need any more conversation, I don't think, unless somebody's got a question.
And we've been real fortunate with our first-time home buyers. We've only had about two or three, but I think this is the third one to face foreclosure out of seventy-four families, so we've got a pretty good track record. We're looking out of that. So I do need a motion to approve the...
Trying to get you one. Motion to approve.
Thank you. Motion to second, all in favor indicate by saying aye. All right. Motion carries. Next item, Pete.
Thank you. Danny's Archer, the chair of our historic preservation commission term has expired, and she's offered to continue to serve, and I would request that you reappoint her for a new three-year term.
Okay. Discussion or motion?
Motion. Like to make a motion to retain Miss Archer.
Second.
All in favor indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Motion carries unanimously. Thank you, Pete. Mr. Grove, you have the next item.
Yeah, this is the grant of a license which is similar to an easement that, uh, will be given from the state to the city relative to the Country Club Drive and Forty-One Project. That makes the whole thing work. Resolution has you approving it to get it. I recommend your approval.
Any discussion on this item?
Motion to approve the resolution.
Second.
All in favor indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Motion carries unanimously. Uh, Mr. Riggs, you have the next two.
Yes, Mayor. The first one, Southern Natural Gas wants to sell their facility to South or upstream of Toca, which is everything in the Gulf of Mexico. They would like their customers to agree on this. But this resolution gives our, uh, the attorney we use in DC, John, the, uh, lets him sign for us. And I'm ready to approve all of that.
Okay. Any questions for Gary on this item?
Motion to approve.
Second.
Motion to second, all in favor indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Motion carries. Next item, Gary.
Uh, the next is the, is a franchise agreement with the city of Hawaii. This replaces the original one that was done in nineteen sixty-one.
Any substantial changes on our part?
Uh, there's going to be a three percent that goes to the city of Hawaii, but it doesn't cost us anything.
All right. Any questions for Mr. Riggs on this item?
Make a motion to approve.
Second.
All in favor indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Motion carries. Thank you. Chief Culpepper, you have the next item.
What's that?
He's got a gun.
It is this time of the year for our annual report to the, uh, to the federal government on the asset forfeiture expenditure. As you know, that program allows us to take seized assets and, and use them for direct support for law enforcement. This past year, we've spent in excess of three hundred seventy-two thousand dollars that would've been paid for out of taxpayer pockets, which came from other sources, so we need permission for you to sign this report and send it in as due in October.
That ending balance, is that accurate as of when?
That's about two weeks over.
Okay.
So that's, it's within dollars.
If y'all are curious, that's the number. Sometimes we get asked for that.
Do we still have?
Yes.
Any questions for the chief on this item? Any discussion? If not, chair, we'll entertain a motion.
Motion to approve. Second.
All in favor indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Motion carries. Let's skip Dan and go to...
Wait another month. I'll give you an update on the Public Safety Headquarters Fire Station number four. We've gone through a process, Potts Construction, Grant, first contractors, and working on local vendors and other vendors to submit paperwork to get approval on this project. To give you a brief background, since two thousand eight, when we started this project with our first architect, and went through the process and made some initial plan designs, uh, we changed architects shortly thereafter, and then hired, and hired, like I said, hired a new architect. Initial estimate at that time was ten million dollars for that building, with a forty-nine thousand eight hundred square foot building. Went through the process, like I said, with Potts and Graham. They've come up with the new plan design, our specs plan design, and the project cost estimate, the actual number, guaranteed maximum price is eleven million, six hundred forty-one thousand, five hundred seventy-two dollars. It's what's being proposed. It's a fifty-one thousand, five hundred sixty-four square foot building. If you look back on, what was initially estimated was ten million by square footage. It's about twelve percent higher than two years ago. Those numbers, again, were kind of initial estimates. Nobody really put a strong pencil to it, but this is a good solid number based on our contract with the construction manager at risk, again, which is Potts and Graham. That is guaranteed maximum price not to exceed that. If for some reason, the price does change and goes above that, Potts will pay for the additional cost. If there is a saving to that, the city reaps the hundred percent of that savings. The next slide goes in there and talks about Fire Station number four. It's, again, we started the process in two thousand eight. We looked at some alternative properties that, to replace the old Fire Station number two on MLP site. Keith Loveland interviewed, or basically went around and checked on different various properties that we looked at and got some price quotes, but it came back, the best alternative was buy some additional property behind that existing station. With that additional property, there's some, some site major site work that we have to do in order to make this property, this existing fire station, the new one, built on that site. The projected cost, the actual, proposed guaranteed maximum price not to exceed is three million, two hundred twenty-four thousand, five hundred fifty-three dollars for that site. That is the one that's, you know, extremely over what we anticipated. Eight hundred thousand dollars of that number is for site work, for land work, and also the underground stormwater detention and everything else associated with that. So it's a, you know, it's a two-point-four million dollar building with eight hundred thousand dollars for the site work. What, uh, in order to make this work with it, in the overall two thousand seven sploß, the next slide and the handouts you have kind of goes through the process of what we have available with projects on the sploß list. Know what to make it work. Uh, you can't really see from there, I didn't give you the handout, but we're going to have to get the council to okay two road construction projects that we have on the list, in particular Sugar Valley, Bernick Road, where there's intersection improvements that we're working in conjunction with Barto County. We actually haven't started, gone too far in that project. It's about seven hundred thousand dollars that was left in this two thousand seven project list for that, those funds to do that work. And then a new bridge opening, it's a creek in Sugar Valley Road, estimated that costs eight hundred thousand based on the engineering estimates. Those two projects would have to be put on hold, and with the current economic conditions we have, more than likely not being able to put forth, we'll have to do them at a later date.
Now, we discussed that earlier, and Bobby, we asked you, and you said that bridge is safe.
Correct.
Have we touched base with the county on the, on the intersection?
I have touched base on the county in the Sugar Valley at Bernick Road. They do have a narrow sploß list, but, you know, because of our funding issue, we have to decide on which project...
Of course, with seventy percent of the money, they've got everything in their sploß.
I understand. I mentioned that to them the other day, too. With the new, the new list I handed out this evening was a little slightly different from what was in your handout, uh, the agenda package earlier in the week. We do have available funds based on the continuation of the sploß, the estimated collections that we have going forward. The information that Tommy just shared with you, the DEA funds, we anticipate using nine hundred fifty thousand dollars for this police headquarters. That is allowable on federal law and the federal DEA requirements. And, uh, existing interest earnings we have, there will be some savings that were left over on the Clarence Brown Conference Center. That was a joint project with all the cities within Barto County that came in under the twenty million dollar sploß list budget, so there will be some money coming back to the city. But I do recommend approval of these two projects. Again, the guaranteed maximum price combined will be fourteen million, eight sixty-six, one twenty-five for both these projects, if you do apply approval.
I do want to, once again, voice my, my, I guess my question or concern that between the time of the estimate a couple of years ago to the time now that the cost per square footage went up, and I know that you...
It, it went up about twenty-four dollars a square foot approximately. It was from two hundred and one on, on Public Safety Headquarters. That was an estimated ten million with the square footage size, it was a little over two hundred dollars a square foot. It's come in, I believe, about two hundred twenty-four dollars a square foot on, for the Public Safety Headquarters. It's a slightly larger building than what was initially proposed, but that's a twelve percent increase in a little over two years. And that was based on, again, some initial early estimates, the two thousand nine, you know, estimates.
How are, how are the users? You guys okay with this? You've been talked to about this and had, had input into it?
Yes.
Anything to get out of where you are right now?
Dan, this is Aaron Tate. This is... This is it, right?
This is the most we will pay.
Okay.
The savings we will get.
What tools do we have to drive them to save us some money?
That would be if market conditions on what they anticipate, all the steelwork and brick and everything else that comes, you know, that they're purchasing, we will still, obviously, be looking over it as well as Tommy Sanders, the city engineers, been under the process besides the police and fire chief. We're all continuing to look at that and make sure...
Do we see the invoices?
Yes.
Okay.
We basically, we approve a process and make sure, and if there's a difference between what the estimates we, you know, they looked at, and Potts has been very thorough on their numbers and looking at everything, going thoroughly through it. And just, you know, I mentioned earlier in the work session, I sat down with one of the companies that's providing some steel cavity in there. That was the only bidder that was in there, and we negotiated a discount of about $20,000 off of that. So if we can get additional discounts, like I said, that's going to come back to the city.
But you're not, I mean, are you charged with that job or are they charged with that job?
As with every city dollar, I make sure, and I've been here for 114 years, I mean, I look at everything I can.
Under our agreement with them, their responsibility is to have the project built for $14 million or whatever that exact number is. And, you know, anything over that, they're liable for. Anything under that, we get to keep. We do not control their additional overhead or labor or material buying, except for to the extent that we review that and will tell them, for example, if they're buying brick at double market price or something like that, we'll say, you don't need to buy brick at this price. I mean, you know, those type of issues. There is no incentive for them to actually come in under, they don't get an additional bonus or anything.
Right.
But that was something that was really discussed at the original when we were deciding who we were going with. It was, you know, that was a kicker that, hey, we'll give you a maximum price, but we come in below.
Yes, and it was, and...
Just keep our fingers crossed, I guess, right?
Well, and also, it's 12 months filled out, and as they told me and other contractors said, I mean, if they can get it done in 11 months, that's just, you know, $50,000 saving there not being on the job site for one month.
That's unfortunate, Chris. At 12% over two years, that's not consistent with what you're experiencing throughout the industry, aerospace, construction. I believe that we had a little room for them to play with, say like $14 million, and could be, well, I don't know, this is me, but it seemed like the many took advantage of it.
Well, going back to the original $10 million estimate, I mean, there's a lot of information that we didn't have when our architect initially put those numbers together, what kind of brick we're going to use and how the building was actually designed, give us better specification on what possible cost would be. And I didn't have the new architect go back after we had the building designed to say, what do you guys think? Is this number reasonable? But, you know, it's the bottom line is that we had initial early estimate, came in higher, even the splot project list we put together early on, some of those numbers change sometimes for the better, sometimes for the worse.
And remember, this building is bigger and has more square footage than the original estimated building was, so there would be an inherent increase just because of that.
Any other questions or discussion? All right. Well, if not, Chair will entertain any motions.
Well, I think we're all disappointed that the original estimate has been exceeded, but I think we have to go with what's in the best interest in the long view, and I think it's to proceed with buildings. My motion is to accept the contract as offered.
Second.
And there's a motion and a second. I'll just add a comment for discussion before I call the vote, but do keep in mind, we're basing it, and I agree with your comment, but kind of like Dan has said, the initial estimate we had, we don't know how much, how valid that initial estimate was. We're kind of basing it comparing one to the other when we don't know how good the data was on this front end. Take that for what you want. We do have a motion and a second. All in favor indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, like sign?
I think I abstained.
Anybody abstain?
Yeah, me too.
I think I abstained.
Do I have two abstaining here? By statute, it takes four votes by council for it to pass, and since Diane is not here, I have the option of exercising that right, so I will vote in favor of, so it carries by 4-0 with two abstaining. All right. Next item is demolition for a fire station on MLK.
Yes, Mayor. With that set out for proposal to proceed to back, cornerstone demolition, received the lowest bid for $9,600 to demolish that old fire station, and we have tried to recycle everything we can out there. Different departments have taken the oven and hot water heater, so we've used what we could out of that building, but it's time to tear it down and start a new one.
Okay. Any discussion on this item? If not, Chair will entertain a motion.
Motion to approve.
Second.
Motion second, all in favor indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Motion carries unanimously.
Just mentioned that October 3rd is the notice to proceed date for Potts and Graham to start work on that Public Safety Headquarters and have the date we want to shoot for for a groundbreaking, but Elaine will be in touch with that.
Thank you, Dan. Somebody wake up Bobby.
Back in the office pool meeting, Mayor and Council approved the vote to appropriate $70,000 to do some emergency work on our railroad ditch project that we've been working on, trying to alleviate some flooding in the downtown area. We did all the work we planned to do on the west side of the main channel, and we got started on the east side where we were planning on putting in a parallel channel up behind the newspaper to hopefully keep most all the water from Tennessee Street side on that side of the railroad, some 1,200 feet down the track. Field conditions have necessitated some additional funds. We ran in some stuff on that side in the railroad roadway that we hadn't counted on. We're having to purchase and install about 300 feet of pipe that we really hadn't intended to put in, but WorldCom Fiber has a fiber optic cable runs down the track that wanders over toward the adjacent property owners' properties, and we're going to have to pipe the channel in order to make it safe. We've got some utility adjustments that are running a little bit more than we anticipated. We hope that an additional $60,000 from our stormwater budget, which we have the funds, if we could get that $60,000 appropriated to finish the job, we hope that that will do it, because quite frankly, that's about all my budget will stand at this point in time.
Okay. Questions, comments, or motions?
Just informational, yeah. Part of what you're doing now over at the intersection with the railroad track is this work you're talking about?
Yes, sir. We have a gas main and a water main that ended up in the flow line of the new proposed pipe that our utilities are adjusting at this point.
And we're hoping that some of that water will come on the east side of the track as well as the big ditch on the west.
Oh, yes, sir. There will be quite a bit coming on the east side, yes.
And Mayor, just to remind y'all, this is a sole source project due to CSX's requirements.
Thank you, sir. Any discussion? If not, Chair will entertain a motion.
Motion to approve.
Second.
All in favor indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, like sign? Passes 4-1. Thank you, Bobby.
Clark Kent, those glasses.
A little bit.
Eric, Council, we have a heat pump at the water treatment plant that needs to be replaced. We received bids for the replacement of this unit. Bids were received from four local contractors with preferred heating and air conditioning, submitting a low bid at an amount of $9,250. Based on questions that were brought up during the work session, I did contact the water plant superintendent. He indicated that requests were sent out to other local vendors. He can't specifically remember who all they were that we did not get responses from, but we do feel that these are good prices that were submitted here. Low bidder is $2,000 lower than the next lowest bidder, and he's somebody that we're dealing with there at the water treatment plant. So we recommend award of this purchase to preferred heating and air conditioning in the amount of $9,250. This work will be funded from the budget, and all the everify and save documentation has been submitted.
Okay. Any questions on this item? Not sure, Chair will entertain a motion.
Motion to approve.
Second.
All in favor indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Motion carries unanimously. Continue on, sir.
The next item, we're requesting approval for annual purchase of chemicals used at the water police control plant, the water treatment plant. We have a number of different chemicals that are, we're required to purchase anywhere from a weekly basis to semi-annually and even yearly. We negotiate prices at the first of every year for these chemicals, and we have a list of, you'll see in your memo there, of the different companies who submitted the low price. We often run into a situation where an order comes in that's over $5,000, and we can't anticipate when this repurchase is going to be in time to get it to council. We may run out of that chemical before we have time to come to council with that. So that's why we're requesting approval on the annual basis of these four companies with the chemicals listed here. If it is necessary to rebid, we'll bring that before the council, and we do have the everify and save documentation from these companies. So that's what we're...
For all or for some?
For all of them, of the ones on the updated list I gave you.
Okay.
And we may be bringing lists of the other companies that were not able to get us the documentation.
So that's Southern Industrial Allied and Prestige off this list?
Yes, it's Southern IONICS Industrial Chemical Company, Allied Universal Corporation, and Prestige Water Solutions.
And you'll bring us back to rest when you get that?
Yes.
Okay. Just so everybody's clear, we're approving only those vendors that have submitted their everify documentation. Okay. And that's on that memo sheet that Ed gave us before the meeting. Is there any discussion? If not, Chair will entertain a motion.
Motion to approve.
Second.
All in favor indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Motion carries. Thank you, Ed. Mr. Myers, you got the next three? And if you would, let's lump all three of these into one motion, so if you'll just run right through those for me, please.
The next three are for electric meters, power poles, and reclosers, all three of these items. The unit cost is less than $5,000, but the quantity we ordered put, we put it over $5,000, and these are normal items that we use every day.
Any discussion? If not...
Make a motion to approve.
Second.
All in favor indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Motion carries. Next item, please, sir.
Number seven, that is transformer purchase. This item is over $5,000, and this is for the pad mount transformer to serve at the Public Safety Headquarters. We took three bids, and as you guys know, we purchase orange transformers on total ownership cost as opposed to initial cost. Herbie had the lowest total ownership cost and is recommended to make that purchase in the total amount of $8,684.
Motion to approve.
Second.
All in favor indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Motion carries. Thank you, David. Before we go to the financial report, we do have one item to add. Chair will entertain a motion to add that item.
Motion to add the item.
Second.
All in favor indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Item is added.
We have a situation where a commercial building at the corner of Tennessee Street, Martin Luther King Jr. Drive, has had its sewer service disrobed into a failing sewer that we have out at Tennessee Street. One of the options that we were able to develop to correct this situation involves extending the sewer that's on East MLK Street or MLK Junior Drive up to this business. This option will allow us to avoid working out of Tennessee Street. It will probably, or is the lowest cost option for correcting this situation, and it also moves us a step forward towards eventually relocating the sewer that's in Tennessee Street, one street over. Bids were received from four separate contractors. Corley Contractors submitted a low bid in the amount of $17,687.77. We recommend award of this contract to Corley Contractors of Dallas, Georgia, and this will be paid for from the budget item for maintenance and repair of sewers.
Any discussion?
Motion to approve the bid from Corley.
Second.
All in favor indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Thank you, Ed, and we'll conclude this evening with our financial report. Mr. Ryan Harden.
On the layer and council, we're looking at the July 2011 and comparing to July 2010. In the general fund, revenues have decreased over the last year by over $2,500. Expenses have also decreased by $565,000. This is due mainly to the decrease in personnel expenses. Last year, we had a three pay period month in the month of July. This year, we don't have two pay periods. Along with those personnel expenses in the general fund, we also had decreased operating expenses. Three areas of revenues in amount to our monthly basis are the local option sales tax. Compared to last year, this year, we decreased by about $49,000. Police files and forfeiture has increased by about $2,300, and billing permits and inspection fees, we have decreased by $1,300. Water and sewer fund, revenues decreased over last year by $9,200. Expenses decreased by $88,000. This is due largely to the three pay periods that we had in July this, last year. The gas fund revenues have increased by $50,000 over last year, while expenses have decreased by $402,000. This is due mainly to, again, personal costs, operating costs, and the cost of purchased gas. Electric fund revenues have increased from last year by $478,000. Expenses have also increased by $310,000. This is due mainly to the increase of purchase, cost of purchasing electricity. The stormwater fund revenues have increased over last year by $1,900. Expenses, again, have decreased by $16,000, once again due to the personal cost along with capital expenditures. Solid waste fund revenues decreased from last year by $2,900, while expenses also decreased by $25,000, again due to the personal expenses, decrease in personal expenses. And finally, in the fiber optics fund, revenues have increased from last year by $3,000, while expenses have decreased by $22,000, again, once again due to the personal expenses along with operating expenses. That is our report for the evening.
Okay. Question for Tom?
Just curious, I probably could have called you and asked you this, but that drop in sales taxes, has that put that number under budget now?
We are under budget currently, yes. Hopefully, that will, that number will pick up in the next month or so.
Thank you, sir. Any other items that need to come before council tonight? Somebody strap Greg into his chair. Diane's not here to give you a rundown of what's going on, so a motion to adjourn. Get her a rump out of that cap.